All right, it is five o'clock on Monday, November ninth. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. Jim Boucher?
Yes, ma'am.
Calo?
Here.
Beth Martin?
Here.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Here.
Jane Roche?
Here.
Lance Trelle?
Here.
Lee Webster?
Here.
Present. All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. It is time we will go to public student comment. Okay. And while we're waiting for Mr. Floyd Noah with knowledge that was good received from public comment by email, this actually isn't in public, although we are addressing public comment policy late tonight. This was a change that we made during the pandemic, during the virtual meetings, and we continue to accept the public comment by email in the sense that we are still posting them publicly after they've been redacted. Sure, ma'am. All right, there is no public comment tonight. Okay, then we will go on to Agenda Item Six, Approving the Consent Agenda. And I would like to recognize donations to the district include Incredible Bank, Wassa Public Product, Donner Soup dot org, David and Denellis Callan, Executive Beans, and Dorrod's Volleyball Team. With that, I'm thinking a motion to approve the consent agenda. Great, great, although we do have a consent that I want to pull out actually before that. So this, we have a regulation that was submitted today to the board. To everybody, and I would like to pull out this regulation and address a concern with this regulation.
So we can pull that out and jump setting code section next time we need?
Right, we're not so vacuous, we're not notified to address the concerning code section tonight, but we do need to address the regulation and the request for that regulation in code section.
So I'll make that motion and to approve consent agenda, we'll pull out that regulation.
Okay.
Just to feel like, I want to convey a concern through this and in place of him back, the presence of Jordan and Commander Conrad and other in order to get.
Well, let's do it this way. The only thing that we're pulling out are the pretty damn things. Now, it's up to the person. Okay, clarify that.
Addressing the matter of what they did. So the rest of the day, we care and the board needs to address that. I think we can accept that. Okay, so let me just.
I am moved that.
Okay. All on paper?
Aye.
Of both? Sentence, motion carries, with great gratitude for the donations to this, thank you. All right, going on to Agenda item seven, Old Recurrent Business. The first item is, this is from the Education Operations Committee meeting that is at the end of October, April twenty-sixth. The first item is referendum update. Is there a revision or cancellation of the comments?
There is. Yes. A lot has changed since the last referendum, so we had a referendum. And as everybody knows by now, two questions failed. And to proceed and continue our work, we need to know a couple of things and understand a couple of things. And the presentation is short, like the deck that we're seeing, but the discussion could be long. Take it very close naturally. Some things that we need to know after last Tuesday's referendum by statute, these are some facts that we just have to be aware of. There are many referendum opportunities today that there used to be two or three years ago.
The leveler here?
Every single April and every other one. So the next six opportunities for referendum, April twenty-one, which is in a few short months, the following year.
You're calling all your stuff outside already. Are you good?
I separated them by color in calendar year. Because in a given calendar year, you're doing two questions. So for April twenty-one, that's the only opportunity in calendar year twenty-twenty-one.
There's a chance I will be at the.
If you want to.
Still, right, it's better if I'm here there tomorrow.
Also, and of course, I understand, April twenty-twenty-one, it feels like it's years away because it's twenty-twenty-one. The board would need to make a decision by January twenty-second of twenty-one in order to hit the referendum date. So if you start thinking about December or January twenty-second of twenty-one and you start backtracking, there are a few holidays in there and there's a lot of work to be done to bring a question in April. But I really need to understand some of these milestones and that to be met. Next slide, please. This is a conceptual graph, a lot of assumptions are ignored, a lot of minor fluctuations are ignored. But we need to understand this, and we need to understand that when spending fluctuates. For example, if you let a series of referendum opportunities pass you by and your spending goes down, we know what happens when spending goes down. Spending goes down, aid goes down. And it doesn't go down until the next year. So if we take a look at this green graph, and that represents spending, don't pay too much attention to the scale, let's pick one hundred. If spending goes down from one hundred down to eighty, what happens to aid in that year? Nothing, because aid is one year lagging reaction. So aid reacts the next year, and then aid goes down. And what happens when aid goes down? The levy goes up. So you give this volatility in mill rate that nobody really wants. The taxpayers don't want that, we don't want that. It's not a good situation to allow your spending to greatly fluctuate because it does the same to your mill rate. Sometimes in pretty strange ways, in this case, looking for spending goes down and the levy actually goes up. So we need to be aware of that, next slide. This is a pretty complicated slide, there's a lot of stuff in there. It's essentially a road that you're taking right now, and a lot of forks in the road. And it represents the mill rate, and again, a lot of assumptions are ignored, and a lot of edges are rounded off. And it's conceptual in nature. But right here with this blue box, that's where we're at right now, we have a current mill rate of ten dollars and twenty-nine cents. It went down fifty cents from the previous year, ten seventy-nine, down to ten twenty-nine. And we told people, and we were all talking about the referendum questions and the information campaign, and we can pass both those questions without a mill rate impact or without a levy impact. That same thing can be said for April twenty-one, because April twenty-one also happens before you set the next levy next November. So whatever we can say about affordability for November twenty, last week, we can say about April twenty-twenty-one. The same can be said, affordability measures exactly the same. What happens if we pass that opportunity or it fails as well? Now remember, we can ask both questions with no tax impact. That was a hundred and fifty-five million dollars in borrowing and three million dollars in operational. It's an adjutant relief. If it fails, or we miss that opportunity, the mill rate will go down a little bit. We don't have the amount of callable debt to access the next call that we have right now. Question?
Yeah, question. Instead of the mill rate going down, couldn't we take that money and put it into building to grant to, if these referendums pass, or I mean, if they don't pass, so that they can do some of the things that would have been done under referendum than the mill rate fluctuating?
No, we can't, and here's why, because statutorily, we can levy for the amount of referendum debt that we have. The referendum debt is debt that the community told us that we could authorize to take. So we only have the amount of our house payments if you want to think of it that way. And currently, we're levying, I think, about fourteen million dollars for referendum approved by taxpayers to pay down debt. Next year, the opportunity does go down, but we're starting to run out of callable debt next year. So we could only do that if the taxpayer is safe, we can do it. Which is why we try to do once and probably give another shot to, right? So if we miss this opportunity in April twenty-one, or that opportunity failed, or something of that nature, then next year it would go down. And then when you pass a referendum in April twenty-two, it would go back up. If the dollar amount was the same, we're making some assumptions, or you have to choose a smaller dollar amount to keep it flat. If it failed one more time and you went to November twenty-two or April twenty-three, they won't be in the same levy cycle. Now the mill rate goes down a lot, because you ran out of callable debt, there's no more prepaid, there's no more defeesance. So it goes down quite a bit, and now if you want to pass a referendum, I did get a smaller dollar amount. I didn't bring it all the way up to here, I get the smaller dollar amount. And that's a tough second. Right, because people wants to go, they want low taxes. If they get used to uber low taxes like seven dollars, they want to keep that low tax rate. Right? So this is a conceptual picture, and we're all on the information campaign trail, so to speak. We got the question once in a while, right? Mr. Holdson asked that question once in a while. What's going to happen if the referendum passes? Well, that's a multifaceted question. What if this one fails? What if the next one fails? It's a series of questions, actually, so this is a good look at that. We can go back to this slide if you'd like, with maybe any questions on that, and I can address also. How about we look at the next slide? This is Iwin, and this is a reaction to the question or this statement, you can't pass a referendum during a pandemic. This is data from the two referendums statewide that were attempted during the pandemic. One of them was early on in April, and people thought, well, we just don't understand that it's pandemic going on. Maybe they voted without realizing that. Last week, we're well into the pandemic, and we saw some more results. By category, issued yet, recurring, non-recurring. Last week, Tuesday, there were fifty-one questions, and seven were found. And we represented two of those seven. So if there's a pandemic, it is possible, if you pick the right question, and engage in the right information传递, and consult the right people, and with your direction, we'd like to get that on the track. Next slide just kind of wraps it up and invites conversation. You probably have some questions, we probably all want to have a discussion. You certainly want to have a discussion, our next steps, Dr. Hill, do you want to say what we're through on our next steps? And then maybe a little bit more tightness on our timeline, considering we might be talking about January twenty-two. Not January two thousand twenty-two, January twenty-second, deadline for the board.
Yeah, what else can I receive tonight is, on sort of action in general, consensus in the board of interest in pursuing a referendum in April. Before we ask you that, so let you know that we intend to start a follow-up phone survey, using the four and four eleven survey, to try to determine what was or what were the reasons of that referendum fail. So we would have that information by early December. And so we are seeking some information, and clearly, we would start to engage the community as well, more in person. We can get that to happen, and that was a struggle during the information campaign, but we would seek some direction in some. Wonder if the board first of all has questions or direction for the administrative team as far as pursuing a potential April referendum?
Um, I. I just want to say, I wouldn't be interested in a referendum in here, next year at all. We're still going through a pandemic. Yes, you know, some referendum may have, you know, gone through during the elections, but we're still going through a pandemic, I don't see us getting out of the pandemic until maybe late twenty-twenty-one, which is what I'm thinking. And so I would not be interested in a referendum in twenty-twenty-one. And then my other concern is the issue of transparency. So no one has addressed my issues on transparency throughout this last referendum. It was only after we voted that the problems presented themselves, there wasn't transparency. So until my concerns are addressed about transparency, about meeting minutes, and keeping notes about the committee meetings, I'm not interested in another referendum.
So first of all, I would be interested in entertaining a referendum for the simple reason that I still believe that it is when I voted to approve the last one, that there are many, many positive things for the district that come out of that process. I think there's perhaps, I don't think all the community is effectively, because I think that one's not. You think that who wants Chris, but not the true Democrats are going to lead the district, and hoping people that I've heard that would love to be that, what are we really going to get? You know, and you can talk about the high milestones and all that stuff, and that's fine, but people truly want to know what is this value going to give? And then we also know that there was a couple other reasons, you know, perhaps why the tide turned, you know, into a mill. And I would think that as long as we acknowledge what those were, and perhaps you didn't find out, you know, anymore in the survey, and you go into it, we go into it collectively with a different perspective and different position from the meeting. I have faith in the community, that they will entertain it again, and hopefully, we can end up with a more positive, positive result.
So I also would support pursuing a referendum in April as well. I think there's an educational opportunity for our students. I'd like to see a few changes though in the process, I want to make sure that we have input from all communities, that there are more aggressive steps, creative steps if necessary, to ensure that happens. I second, I'd like to see at least one board member serving on a committee, if not more. I think that's important, I think we see that in a couple of areas, not just the referendum, where board members serving on committees would be really helpful. And third, if we do decide to pursue a referendum, I'd like to see a better information campaign. I just think that we didn't put enough out there, and I don't think it is just because of the pandemic, because of the numbers that Bob shared, how many were successful in Wisconsin, which statewide is a term of pandemic, basically, I hear. So I would like to see a significant improvement in that.
I would agree with you as well. I don't know if we would be able to even have much of a committee process this time around, because we're looking at making a decision in January. So to me, it sounds more like trying to identify which parts of the referendum created the no vote. Obviously, anytime you try to pull the school, there's going to be a no vote, no matter what, every time that happens. So we know that's one, but there may be others as well. So this time around, it seemed to me like it would be more of a process of trying to identify, you know, where the negatives were, and removing or altering the referendum proposal that way, basically as a full board. And that works, correct me if I'm wrong, it just seems like it would be probably too much of a time coming to just start over, so to speak.
I would agree, starting over would be the best option, and engaging this full board and then the development model, I see it would be essential. I did make some promises to community members when we were out speaking with them, that we would re-engage the community in person, so I'll certainly follow through on that setup to the extent that we can get people to engage and break everyone's forward foot. So if you're right, we would start working scratch, we're starting where we are, take the feedback that we get, allow it to engage the community, bring that back to this board, I'll create the project.
And I think, you know, some of that community engagement, committees, and meeting with parents, meeting with families, is extremely important. If we're talking about a referendum that involves closing a school, combining schools, reconfiguring east side versus west side, big things like that. It's not quite, I'm not going to say it's not important, but it's not quite as important if we're talking about adding air conditioning and adding gyms or adding cafeteria to a school that doesn't have one. Those are the type of things that I don't, I don't think that needs quite as much. I mean, what are you going to talk to parents, they're going to say, yeah, it'd be great if our school had a cafeteria instead of having an eating gym. I mean, so if we're looking at carrying this left both down, removing some of the things that created the no votes, you might end up with something that isn't very controversial. You know, it's basically just hitting the direct needs of conservative buildings. It might not need quite as much parent involvement and community involvement as it would if we were closing a school, for example.
I think that the precise problem is the loaded issues are on the negative side, and mundane issues are on the positive side, it's hard to sell something with mundane issues. So I think that we somehow make people better selling job of the positive impact of a referendum.
Yeah, I mean, compared to schools, we did, you know, compared, yes, the number of schools that we have and the expense that we have and the time around those schools, it just, you know, hammers our budget. You talk about it every year, there are some educational benefits and consolidations, but I think it's a good thing, but it's always going to create a no vote. And so I think we'd have to decide whether or not we want to have something like closing a school, including our referendum, because it's always going to be imperative to get it back. You know, and I hope that there would be some more yes vote type of issues, but like you said, Dr., it just wasn't that much. So it might just be a case of us trying to take out some of the negatives.
I agree that I think we need to go ahead with exploring it, I think the additional survey is very important. I know that the information box pandemic that was up there, I have been saying, he's telling me he should, but there's an override very often this last time around, and that was going to be the whole school to rebound from. I think that really is a negative impact on this whole thing. I think there are a lot of positives, hopefully, we can, I think, let it live, and let it live, and engage the community more, certainly, we do just ask.
And from the. Pushback to April twenty-twenty-two, we think there's some important process changes, and some really important community discussions. And I think that when we have a big event, it's over us, that takes up a lot of that thinking, and we need to be speaking with people face to face, and really engaging the community. And I think we have to deal with some bold changes that may involve some of my schools, but that's going to take some big discussions that are going to be more than we want.
What do you think about leaving those big, bold issues and discussions to a future date, like a year or two from now? I mean, have a good committee structure and meeting with families, but still trying to get to the nuts and bolts part of this current, this last referendum, of air conditioning, schools don't have it, even providing a, you know, full in the country, just don't have it. And not hitting on those real emotional issues that I don't think we have enough time to really develop, you know.
I think it would leave some, it would leave some issues on the table. In that case, we could just do everything where it is, fix the upgrade, but what if you spend all that money on a school that didn't even decide to close?
Yeah, we would have to look into, and that actually was one of the negatives in this one. Anecdotally, I've heard some people saying, why are you putting money into this school? That school should be closed, and you're buying another one, that's a problem, you know. I mean, we talked about that in the first program, and that didn't get a lot of support. But that was one of the things that some people brought up.
Here's a good one, the idea is, I could say, that third core on John Marshall is too hot. You know, we can't just help it, she just transferred out, you know, he was, he wasn't helping for them. So it was, it was cost prohibitive, but that is part of our background now. And John Marshall is a very old school, so is it older than that, or just a little bit? You know, we're agreeing, I'm not sure, they're close. So what if you spent all that money in infrastructure in John Marshall, and we have those community discussions? That's one of the ones that he said, yeah, let's, you place this school in the board. John Marshall, if something like that, we would consider combining with another one. But if you're, we're going to discuss it, John Marshall should be dead with it. Well, why would we decide that we wanted to still rebuild John Marshall on the side?
That would probably be more likely than combining, as far as ours.
Yeah, I think you'd combine it. But if, but if we're telling them to money to the referendum, and he wanted a way, so twenty twenty-one, and it's like, you know, because in April twenty twenty-one, you would be trying to set a better plan. Oh, why shouldn't we build John Marshall on the side? But doesn't that take the community discussions and I think Russian rules a little bit there? Come up with any questions?
I mean, if you meet with parents at John Marshall and tell them, what do you, you know, give us your feedback on what you think about building a brand new school? Meaning parent kind of thing, no bad thing?
Well, that, that was kind of weird, that's wrong.
It's when you close a school or remove boundaries or all those things that I think you really have to get into the loop with for when it's, you know, just adding something new or giving something better.
I guess my answer to you is, I'm not sure. When we have those community discussions, it's going to be a shame we have certain entities that aren't the people. I mean, if you're truly going to engage the community and come up with solutions, then everything should be on their people. And you should say, well, we're going for a referendum to do this, 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 and this, so those things are not available for us to discuss, so. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but that's not even wrong, but you can have a referendum that says, we're going to touch on these schools, because these are schools that we know we're not going to close or we're going to tear down. You might have a board who might say, well, we don't want anything with X school, because that school is something we have to look at in the next community.
I guess I'm looking to change that, but I guess that's where we are at here right now, is just hearing board member feedback, and sharing from everybody except for Jane.
I'm glad we're going for the referendum, as we probably can hear that.
Okay, so does that help then, Dr. Hill? Hearing board member feedback, you'll come back to us then with survey results and information, and we can have a discussion at the end of that information. All right, thank you. So our next item on the agenda, we're still on seven, Old Refurrent Business, this is Neil, an update. And these are the policies that we did approve from Education Operations Committee. Does anybody have any statements they want to highlight? I saw one, I have a public comment that I didn't want to come out.
Yeah, I think I have a comment on the public comment also, a whole, and the thing, I'm trying to believe that if you're going to have a public comment in an imprint or in front of the board, your aim has to be testable. Not over any private information, but I think when you give people anything, that just opens the door for.
They're not going to listen.
Okay. I looked at it and I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, the revision indicates that they may not be submitted, it certainly.
It can't be submitted, obviously, but when we get posted, does it mean you get posted?
No.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure about that, so I was talking to me, so, yep, that's okay. And I can do the list of the different policies that then issues change them to more preserved and better for people to read, then made, and I'd like to see those get changed.
Yeah, I mean, I do support that, there certainly is more inclusive language.
Good to mention, certainly in support of the concept. I did check with our Neil representative about the stats that company looking into, the legal language, if they have, if not something like that. And just to note that if that's the route we want to take, you have some, pretty much every policy comes in through Neil, just so you know.
Although that would, that would likely fall under some sense within the administrative authority to change the government's substance of the policy, so by we, you and, I was like, that's our main contact.
The comments on that, I mean, I don't think it's overly working, and it is more inclusive language.
What, what, sorry, did you spread on this education margin, you know, we have, what was to raise to the public opinion? What is the power of this?
They, well, they, they're about this, it's under control, which is a more inclusive call. Can I make a few here, please? Does anybody have any further comments on that?
I would support that.
Yeah, I think it's easy just to go with the, and to do that administratively.
Do we need to take a board vote on this? Then, similarly, it would change language through our policy, but then we would even do administration make those corrections that they come in.
I think that's what the administration's authority to do with that, or have that.
Okay, so is, is the administration wants to vote to take a vote for that direction, or is it something that you will just?
We can do it, I just wanna check one thing with the guys, do you have anything that we should be aware of?
How do we rank them, and what do they have to do with the rest of the board?
Yeah, you should, maybe.
They will be ranked in the rest of the board.
Okay, all right. Yes, very, very thankful for that.
Okay. All right. I had a comment on the public comment as well, I'm just looking for it here. It's about timing. I'm not sure if you're able to elaborate on the size of this.
Well, Tricia's looking for that, just so you all know, we did have a turning, just to make people that, we're talking about the gap, and we're concerned about free speech issues and so, so then some of the substantive changes or recommendations didn't come from our.
Now, I did find that it's speed under public comment, this is 167.3 speed, and it's a mechanic number, so there has to be a comment, the public comment being upon their arrival meeting. I would like to say that just to be clear prior to the start of meeting.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, I don't have any comment on these. If you have any other comments.
You have one.
Okay.
I have one question. We go down to the, during, during the public comment, and we already suggested we wouldn't care personally, and I would give a couple more. I prefer not to have, um, sure, but can you give me an estimate?
Is that the first question? Three hundred to five hundred, is it three to four?
Three hundred to five hundred, what would they be prepared around?
Probably three hundred, three hundred fifty or so, or two to about eighty. Yeah. Anything different?
I'm fine with that.
Three hundred and eighty?
Sure, absolutely, but that's the common issue. Okay. Okay, so we'll look at that, three hundred sixty then, limitation on the comment, three hundred and eighty there. Are there any other questions or comments on any of these, otherwise?
Words on characters.
Oh, words, yeah, sorry. Yeah, make words.
Yes, that's a great.
We did, I wanna draw on board attention to the English language policy. We were made aware of some inconsistencies in the draft policy practice, so you will see there was a significant change in there. I don't know if the board had a chance, and if it came to review those. If not, we would certainly move that to the end of the month, or if you're comfortable with it, we just want to make sure you were aware of the change.
I'm comfortable, and I'll think of the other things to cable those.
Okay. I didn't notice anything, but what did you think could be problematic?
Nothing, okay, but just there were some substantial changes. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware. Again, that came from folks who worked very, very young staff.
Okay, well, I'm not hearing any other questions, comments of concern, so with those changes that we identified, I'm taking a motion to approve the revised policies presented.
Second.
Okay, can you show me the first part of that comment, and the second side of it, please? All in favor?
All in.
Fine.
Right.
Opposed? Sentenced? Motion carries. All right, thank you. So we're on item seven, three, project, relaunch update.
Right, I can start with that. I would say a big move last week, bringing students back to, to school in person in many cases, and so we just wanted to give the board a, a recovery, assuming there would be some, some questions as well. I guess if you were to slide. One of the topics that we figured would be of interest is the parent requests to change. As you know, we initially asked them to make a commitment, they did, and then as we were in the process of creating this new system, if you will, hence, he says they changed their minds. And so instead of trying, in order to maintain social distancing, maintaining class sizes in the board room, governments, we weren't able to just continue the program on the fly. So we asked people to wait. You can see in this, in the short slide, the requests to go in both directions, like work with a person and those. So, you know, you mentioned we've been on maintaining, like, say, class sizes and social distancing. These, these requests were all processed by last Friday, and all were due last Friday afternoon. In order to change access in, in campus, even a couple days to do that, so I think the, the change of implement on Wednesday, am I correct? On Wednesday. Questions on that process? I'm, I'm, a little later in the month, maybe, I'd like to talk to the board about maybe a similar process with a, a transition next semester. First of all, what do we do about the process?
Is there anybody down there with us?
Is there? I think we have a couple, and one of our, am I right?
Well, you are back to the back, I have close students on the campus, R G Jones Elementary, and they have been contacted by the excellent Springs, who will continue to watch and monitor the video, so they'll accommodate those changes in the next several weeks.
And are there any questions to switch to virtual, or are they looking to switch to in person?
I don't have that person back to me, I am open. Are there a lot of, here, that are wanting to switch? I mean, if they switch to in person, and then they're like, oh, you want to go back to virtual, stuff. Is there a lot of that, or have you not seen a lot of that?
There is, can you go down the sizable list of events?
The sizable list would be, we had one school, we did not have any requests for change, all other elementary schools, and some were going to be one, and that's probably twenty-four students, with parents that had a request for a change. Okay. Because I, I just don't want it to get to a point where there are so many requests for changes that, you know, teachers' classes are going up, they're going down, and then stuff coming, so.
I agree.
Maybe we should look into living, not, you know, like, I don't know, each, each student or household can only, you know, maybe switch in twice a semester, or something like that, just putting it out.
Generally, the point, the purpose, you have to address the people down low, somebody who has a full cert, one who may be part of their, you know, group of children, that is both, you really want to come and be playing. We're gonna put it all there, but you know, the good is in mind, you're gonna have the character, you should help the students, and say, we're part of.
It's not like happens, it don't help so much. I mean, if somebody has suddenly, you know, taken the COVID, and they just don't mind the vaccine, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be that horrible, so we can just help them.
So what we also recognized was potentially a parent or guardian might have made a request early on, maybe in the first two weeks prior to November second. And once they recognized that we could maintain since distance, masks would be one, we made those choices for safety. They may have been on Friday, they would see the phone call from their school principal saying, you know, I'm very pleased with the choice that I have, and I don't feel the change, whether that was in person or virtual or vice versa. So we still give them the option, but it was a parent's choice or guardian's choice when we made the call on Friday. And you can have some that said, you're pleased with what my child does, and we do not want to change.
The second slide, so last week, the district administrative team committed to going to every school multiple times, we wanted to, you know, talk to staff, wanted to observe what's going on at different times of the day, and as we talked about this update, we decided early on that we would take some photo evidence, so as we were out to school, all of us took a number of, of photos, and we didn't just take the highlights, we took photos of large classes, small classes, recess, meal times, encore classes, everything we tried to, that we could do to try and give you, replicate the experience that we saw, and I've got to tell you that the overall experience perceived of that was extremely positive. We know it wasn't perfect, and we know there's still some unsatisfied folks who want things to be a little different, but we went to, this is about a four minutes slide, so thank you, Danielle White, our communications director, for putting all this together. I wonder, Cassie, could you play that for everybody?
That's not for our school, sorry. Maybe it's for you.
Is there a play going on as well?
Yeah. Yeah. Slow. There you go.
And there is no narration over this, I'll just speak a little bit to some of the comments we heard. One, a comment that all of us heard multiple times was, this is going much better than we thought it, and so that was really nice to hear. I think there's a lot, as you can imagine, a lot of anxiety, not even health are good enough, notwithstanding just the, the process itself. Even the students were very, very happy to do that. It was wonderful to hear their laughter in the classrooms and in the hallways. They were practicing their social distancing, what they call a bur, burden? Airplane, airplane arms, yeah, that was, that was going before school, that's still going on. Yeah, there you go, it's nice. Lot of activity in the classrooms, even during learning, there's active learners, getting them up and moving. That was a very common phrase, too. They said, you know, every, every, every staff member we went to, he said, what can we do to make this better? And they really, unless you can come up with more staff to cover absences, really not much, they're just going to adjust the processes. Yeah, a lot of the kids, as you can imagine, were very excited to see their, their friends again.
Please, while we're still playing, I can give a couple, I guess, feedback concerns, that there, like, there was allegedly, like, you know, I noticed a true, that some staff had, like, filing cabinets piled in front of their desk, almost as a barricade between them and the students?
I saw tables where students could sit and the teacher could be back and stay socially distanced. I didn't see any file cabinets. Am I missing, did I? Okay, yeah, I don't think these, oh, I've not heard that.
Okay. It's just, the parents are saying, not inviting at all of the students.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, I did not see that. Recession was an interesting, so they've zoned off the, the playgrounds, again, to, to keep cohorts of students together with their cohort and separate from others, and so they, some areas, you can imagine, on the playground are more fun than others, right? And so they're actually rotating cohorts of students from one area of the playground to another, so everybody gets access to those. There's hand sanitizer everywhere. Larry, is it two or three thousand gallons of sanitizer?
Twelve or three thousand.
Yeah, so we've got a lot of sanitizer, and of course, access to, to sinks. You know, one of the biggest, the biggest struggle we are, that I heard from, from people, and we'll continue to hear, is absences. How do we cover for staff absences? And again, in, in talking with other, you know, Wisconsin Valley Conference districts, that's their biggest issue, too. You saw Merrill had a school that went virtual, they're at forty percent staff absences. And so it seems to be that thirty to forty percent where people just can't cover anymore. And I will tell you, something I really want to celebrate, though, is, is people's willingness to help out. And so, for instance, we have some of our schools that have a higher rate of, of staff absences than others. So, for instance, para professionals are, are critical, you know, to, to supervising our students. And so we've actually been able to, to contact some of the elementary principals and work out, and they would actually loan some of their support staff to schools with higher app, staff absence rates. I was talking to some substitute teachers who were in a classroom where the, the teacher had been quarantined, they were teaching from home, and the substitute teacher or the para was in that classroom, you know, supervising. Everybody's just really creative problem solving, collaborating together to, to do everything we can, you know, make sure that the schools can safely stay open.
So on that, I mean, do, do the individuals that are stepping in to help, do they have a choice, or is it the situation warrants it? I mean, for instance, today, we heard from one parent whose children last week didn't have encore classes in two different, two different days, because those encore teachers were pulled away. I experienced the same thing myself today, waited for twenty minutes for one of my son's classes. Turns out the encore teacher was teaching kindergarten.
Yes.
And so, at what point, I mean, I'm, I'm curious, who, in a And, um, so at what point, I mean, I'm, I'm curious, who, and in a situation like that also, where our encore teachers who are taking on so much teaching virtual and teaching in person, who's covering for them? Their regular encore in-person class if they're taking over as a homeroom teacher?
So their classes aren't being taught if they're teaching a regular.
Right.
A regular class. And so there's going to be a, a lot of these choices that we have to make. Is it more important to, for, for the students to have art or is it more important for that school to stay open? Um, and we've leaned toward, uh, making the best decisions we can to keep schools safely open.
Right, so they're not teaching their encore class, I understand that. But who is with their students that they would be with in person? It's falling on somebody else then?
I imagine they stay in their, in their classroom.
So it's falling on their homeroom teacher who would normally have what, prep time, lunch?
Correct, yep. Sorry? That's true, thank you. We do, if, if, if a teacher does miss their prep time, we do pay them for that.
Thanks.
Should I continue with?
Yep.
There we go, all right. Is this the next one, Cassie? I'm sorry, I can't, all right. So, uh, and probably a lot of this I've already mentioned, yeah. So we, we really did this kind of in lieu of another survey. We've surveyed staff so much and yet we wanted their feedback about how it was going. So we really made the time to go out and talk to people individually. Um, clearly it's not as systematic, but we also know that people get tired of surveys. So we, we hope that this was, um, as accurate. And I think a lot of those things were already mentioned. There are the biggest challenges we heard. You know, again, cohorting students in classrooms for large segments of the day, but you saw a lot of the activities going on, you know, and things like that. Covering for quarantine staff and then balancing instruction for quarantine students. Um, that, those would be the three biggest challenges that we heard from, uh, from staff.
Hey Keith, on the, on instruction for quarantine students, um, you know, like, one of the reasons we went through this whole process of basically restaffing was to try to avoid having the teachers teach in-person or virtual at the same time. Afraid that they would get burned out.
Yep.
And I think there's a local district that's switching away from it right now because their teachers are getting burned out. But what we're finding in a lot of situations is because of quarantine students, our teachers are still teaching virtual and in-person at the same time. And what are your thoughts on, on us having to sort of make a decision of either, either we're not teaching the students who are homesick or quarantined or we, we are, we're doing both, but we're having to reduce our schedule to something like the secondary, for example, where it's Monday through Thursday. Because as these quarantine numbers continue, the teachers are basically teaching both at the same time. Not in as great of numbers maybe, maybe it's only four students online instead of half the class, but it's, it's still teaching both at the same time. And that, that's where we're getting a lot of feedback on that. And obviously, we don't want to lose the instruction of a Friday, but we also don't want to lose the instruction of not teaching the kids if they're home for two weeks. But I don't know if we can do both.
Yeah, and Lance, you asked, you know, really that, that core question, what are our main priorities? You know, I already mentioned, you know, keeping schools safely open is a, is a top priority. So now when we get to that situation where, you know, I'm teaching my, you know, students here, but I've got two or three or four who are quarantined. I talked to a number of teachers who were doing that. And the process that seemed to work well for them was, again, they had their webcam, uh, it was on the, uh, the smart board. And so the students at home at least could see what was being projected, uh, the, the information was loaded into its learning. Um, so the interaction that the, that I saw the teachers having to do with the, the students at home was they would do their normal instruction and then they would, you know, when there's a, when there's something going on, you know, they would walk over to the computer and check in with that student. So it, it, the, the people I spoke to, um, they said it was just really just a mindset. They have to remember to go and check on that student online. I, I, I don't know if anybody else had different experiences that they would want to share. Um, I, I understand the concern, you know, um, we don't want, you know, people to be overburdened. Uh, we also, you know, if they're quarantined for two or three weeks, um, I certainly don't want them, the students to miss that much instruction.
No, and that's why, you know, there's, there's like three options there and, and one of them is just to keep doing what we're doing, but I'm, I'm concerned that, that we can't. You know, if it, if this was something that we thought was going to be going away soon and we just had to power through the semester, I think our teachers could just put their heads down and say, I, I can make it. But when we start talking about, you know, the whole year this way, and, um, I just think something has to give there. Parents certainly aren't going to want to hear that, that their students don't get instruction on, their kids don't get instruction on Fridays, but they also wouldn't want to hear that if their student is sick or quarantined that they don't get any instruction on those days. So it's not a great choice. Seems like that's what this whole year is.
Right, so I think the question in the end is which delivers the better instruction? You know, you're going to have, the, the teachers are going to have students at home and at school, that's going to happen. And I think they're going to need more prep time. So the question is, do, do we deliver better instruction with the teachers having that Friday free to prep or do we deliver better instruction by having more contact minutes a week? And so I think we need to kind of think our way through that and see which delivers the, the, the better advantage.
Here's the thing, I think that, um, I think that we have heard from a lot of teachers that are feeling overburdened. And we really need to take care of our teachers so they can take care of our kids. And, uh, I'm not really sure how, you know, I, when this passed, it was a five-three vote. And I guess, I feel like I wasn't paying attention to that added day and the equity issue. Because we have secondary teachers that have four days in their prep day and elementary teachers that have five full days. And if they're virtual teachers, uh, you know, that time that it takes to create all that content, that's a lot of time. But I think even our in-person teachers have to get creative with their, um, spacing and social distancing and even just their lessons during a pandemic. And I would really support seeing some burden lifted off of those elementary teachers. And quite frankly, I think there's something to be said for lifting something off the students as well. Even if they're going to school in-person every day in masks with the social distancing and the constant hand sanitizer, you know, can we go Monday, Tuesday, give them Wednesday off, Thursday, Friday? Maybe on Wednesday they have some assignments they do at home, so they're still doing some work. And the virtual students too, I, you know, just from my own personal experience, uh, you know, I'm hearing from my son. It's really hard on his eyes doing these five days and we just did one full week of that. But it's that much more time on there. So I think that we really need to explore taking the burden off of our teachers, um, and looking at a four-day option.
Um, Dr. Huns, do you have a sense for, um, other school districts, surrounding school districts and in central Wisconsin? Are there elementary schools going five days as well or is there a variety of different things going on?
I believe it's a variety. I haven't discussed that with the other schools recently. Um, my understanding is, uh, you know, I wouldn't even want to hazard a guess at this, but I'd have to check to be sure.
That'd be something interesting to know, um, like what's happening in the other districts because I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of different variety too. Uh, I haven't heard of another district that has all their elementary schools going five days in-person in a row. And I do agree that it's also hard on kids to be in their bubble. And maybe I would favor not Fridays, but Wednesdays being that break day for cleaning and prepping and.
The only reason I said Fridays is just because it, it coincides with secondary, which a lot of times there's families relying on secondary students to.
Oh, that makes sense.
Well, and Fridays are harder to find subs, there's that issue too.
Right. Wednesday otherwise it would make more sense.
Yeah, I, I like the infancy, I, I think it's something to explore, especially since we're kind of in this for the long haul, for the rest of the school year and.
Well, I think, I think the important thing is that we want to be consistent, right? And so if we're going to explore something, I think we should do it sooner than later so that if there is a change that can be made, families can adapt. And, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's just my other point is that we just want to ensure consistency for our families, for our staff, uh, and if there's something we can do to eliminate some of this burden on our elementary teachers, I think we absolutely need to do it.
Keeps people healthy.
Yeah, I, I do want to make sure we're realizing too that, um, you know, we all certainly care about our staff. And the whole reason that we separated virtual instruction from in-person instruction at the elementary only was, was to take care of our staff. Uh, remember that at the secondary level, the teachers are teaching the one hundred percent virtual students and half of their in-person and then alternating that other group, right? And so, you know, and we gave them some flexibility because initially we had heard, for instance, from the Wausau West staff, because of the, um, the flex mod schedule, that a five-day would be, would be better. And at East, the, the block would work better on a four. And so he said, okay, make that work. Well, they ended up both going, uh, four days. But again, um, again, as you're saying, as you're trying to manage a rotating group and virtual, um, and on Fridays, essentially what they're doing is they're doing asynchronous learning at the secondary. They're also, uh, supporting students in need. They're looking at, I think some classes are still doing the hub where if students need to come in and get support, they're doing that. They're also doing a number of their assessments on Fridays, so it's not taking the place of, of, of instruction. So it's, they're very different models. They were constructed very, you know, completely differently.
Yep.
So just to be aware, and of course, and someone's already mentioned it, um, you know, and Lance, you said it really well. We're, you know, what's the, what's the best of our bad decisions? Because if we go four days a week, obviously we're shifting that burden into parents, right, and, and workplaces. So, um, I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree. I, you know, um, we can certainly look at it. Um, I would have a hard time just, you know, you know, like surveying staff because if you ask me if I want to work four or five days, I'll probably say four, you know, just, um, and, and that's not, not meant to be disrespectful at all. It's just, you know, human nature. Um, so give us something, you know, right now, we just started into this. It was a good first week. We're just starting a second week. Let us, uh, do a little thought on that when we come back.
I really appreciate the feedback and I think this is, this is a part of the responsibility we have as an administrator. I'm glad to hear that we did something different between East and West, for example, where there's a, there's a particular reason for that and it's functioning within that school district, that school. And I think the same thing is true. And if we're getting a lot of feedback that this is a problem, I think that becomes something that becomes an administrative thing. And, uh, and you just need to make note of that and keep us posted with what's going on.
Just, uh, probably says it's on, but.
Yep.
Um, I did have one staff member provide some feedback on that elementary piece. And what they said to me made a lot of sense, I guess, and the, the wording was something like, if we had that fifth day as prep, we could exponentially improve the four days of in-person instruction. And that resonated with, with me. Um, so for whatever it's worth, I agree with everything that was said personally. I, I would absolutely think the Fridays would be a great day for the, um, but regardless, you guys, you guys have got that. Just on a, on a related topic to this, um, I don't know who saw or heard this morning about the, the vaccine breakthroughs that they've had with Pfizer. So they're coming out, um, with the, the US, uh, the National Association of Medicine is already beginning to tier the population in terms of who's going to be getting access to vaccines. And, uh, I think the positive news is that K through twelve teachers are, um, listed in phase two right now, which is, um, extremely, extremely helpful. Now, obviously, for, you know, for those who want it. Um, but they're, they're only following after high-risk health workers, um, first responders and elderly that are in, uh, in institutional settings, nursing homes, skilled nursing facilities and things like that. So depending on the capacity, production, um, there will likely be people who will start receiving it, um, first week of December already, so.
This is great, very encouraging. Uh, I know I was listening a little bit to the, to the task, you know, not just the, you know, the research and the production, but then the distribution and it's a, it is a mammoth undertaking. So, yeah, we're encouraged.
I think, um, Keith, I just wanted to add, you know, it isn't my intent to say, um, okay, today right now, we should just decide, that we're not, not going to have school on Fridays and it's going to be prep, um, because it's a big decision. And so, you know, I recognize that. I, I just, in all my years on the board, there's never been a time where I've had this many teachers contact me and say, I, I won't be able to do this for the whole year. And so that, that's, that's my worry in addition to what, what Pat mentioned about, um, hey, I think I could actually do better for four days than I can do for five days. Um, I just have a worry that you just can't, can't do it the whole year. For short periods of time, yes, but not the whole year. And I just think it's something that we really got to look into, whether it's for second semester or what. I think we've got to look at that real hard.
I have a question. Are we still going to do the, um, two weeks virtual after Thanksgiving? Is that still a thing?
That was never a thing, nope.
Okay, because I, I remember we were talking about that or that was just something that came up. Um, because I was thinking if we are going to go to four days a week, um, you know, if we were going to do a two-week virtual after Thanksgiving or Christmas, I'm thinking that that would be a good time to switch to a four-day week and, and then teachers will have that one Friday to do prep. Because then you're coming back from a holiday, you know, and you're starting, kind of starting over again. And so, you know, I, I think that would be a good place to put that. You know, if, if we were going to do virtual for two weeks after Thanksgiving or Christmas, I think that would be where, it would fit well.
Was that one of the health department's suggestions that were done?
Yeah, we discussed it in a meeting, but then we also talked about if we, if we think that the students are and staff are just as safe with in-person as they are without, then it went, you know, why would we do it? We just kind of talked about it briefly. There was never like a plan.
Right, right, but, but you know, if we did go that way, I think if we were, if, you know, if we were really going to move towards, you know, four days, then, you know, it would fit well in that period. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I guess I would just reiterate, um, that the significant amount of calls and emails that I get just to myself, not that I go to the school board as well, indicating that it's not sustainable right now for elementary. And I don't think that our teachers should be working until nine-thirty at night. I think that they deserve to have a quality of life, that they can enjoy their lives and not be stressed out. And, uh, I'm just hearing from a lot of individuals and, um, and this slide here says, in lieu of another survey, you visited schools, but, you know, why not do the survey then? It, I understand, the results probably will be overwhelmingly supporting a four-day, uh, elementary schedule, allowing for that fifth day of prep and extensive cleaning. Okay, then we have that information.
Yeah, I think the argument for a four-day week is an easy argument to make. It's the one that I would naturally tend towards as, you know, a twenty-five-year professional educator. I can definitely, you know, talk about how valuable extra prep time is at all levels of education. Um, it certainly would buy us a lot of, uh, credit with the elementary staff as well because I think they are suffering. We do hear those, those reports again and again from them and the unsustainability. So I guess all we really, I think, and it sounds like momentum here, is towards the four-day week on the board. And so what we would need to, to know is, well, what, what's that going to cost us? What's the downside to it? Because I think the upside argument is, is a pretty easy argument to make.
One of the downsides would be the, would be some of the parental feedback of, like we heard when we had, um, all virtual, um, which is, you know, want more, more instruction time for my students in person or supervision for my child. What, you know, what can I do? Keith mentioned, you know, their, you know, employers and that kind of thing. Can I have off on Friday to watch my child or is it now they're in a daycare, is that a more dangerous situation than being in school? So there is all kinds of stuff on both sides, so I didn't bring it up lightly. I, I just.
Right, so the, from the parents, I mean, I think it's pretty, pretty obvious that those who want their kids in school will, will want them on, there on Fridays or Wednesdays, whatever the day is as well. Uh, we need to know if there are other things we need to consider.
Yeah.
Well, you know, obviously the most, the most obvious one would be the twenty percent reduction in, in instruction. You know, that's a pretty significant.
Face-to-face time.
Say again?
Face-to-face time.
Correct, yeah. I, I, I mean, you, you certainly can assign, you know, work, um, you know, through its learning. Um, I would say those would be the two things right off the, the top, you know, uh, burden on parents and then the, you know, the reduction in, in face-to-face instruction. And of course, all the interaction that we've talked about being such a positive in the, in the kids, in the kids' lives. Okay, I don't know if I, should I? Okay, I don't know if I, should I finish this already? Okay, these are just, oh, and I think we've talked about some of this, you know, the, you know, the, how the elementary school day is, is set up. I think we've talked about the masks on hands, the six feet. You saw some of the visual representations, you know, around the schools. So I think we've covered, is, is there anything that people wanted to add? Because this is a collaborative effort to create this. I'm not sure if I've done it justice. This slide. We have not talked about leader and me. Again, that's, you know, an important component in the development of the seven habits. And it's gone. Sorry, please. Okay. Let's go to the next slide, Cassie. And this is the contrast with the secondary school day, and I think we've, we've covered those, those contrasts. So, next slide?
On the previous slide there, I feel a need to clarify what might be a misconception. Please understand that the Friday at the secondary level is not simply a day of teacher prep. There is student learning happening there, and teachers are interacting with students. As you can see on the asynchronous learning day, as I explained, most students are doing that learning from home, there are still some that are coming in the building. And then that also creates a day for a variety of intervention and enrichment-type opportunities. Just as an example of enrichment, intervention, I think, that makes sense. How could we use that for enrichment? One of the things that some high schools are looking at would be to bring in the juniors on a Friday to do a practice ACT class. And we know, not just from my kind here at WASA, but I know in my kind of education, when students have that opportunity to do a practice run of an ACT in as close to typical test situations as possible, that then when they take the actual test, which can open lots of doors for them beyond high school, they tend to do much, much better. So that's just one example of something where, if in a past year, if we wanted to do that practice, we moved this route, a typical day of learning, now we can keep asynchronous learning rolling for students and operators when having students with their ACT practice. So I just, I, I wouldn't feel good, I couldn't sleep tonight. I went home and felt that you have a question that our secondary teachers are doing nothing but their own personal practice, that is now where they are spending the majority of their time by any means. And I would expect the same would be true if our elementary ended up having an asynchronous day, they'd still be interacting with parents, they'd be interacting with their students. It would not be just a day where they would practice. Just wanted to make that clear.
That's really an important addition to the conversation, and that might actually help out with the parents, that there could be an opportunity for those families in need to still send their students on that Wednesday or Friday for an alternative experience during that day.
Even if they're doing the prep time in the, in the secondary, they still are not sitting in front of students from 8:30 to 3:30 five days a week, and they have some flexibility to do what it is they feel is most important to do, whether that's intervention, enrichment, or, you know, preparing for next week's lessons, whatever that may be. So I, I appreciate what you said, but I just, I, I don't know that that's a compelling reason not to pursue that as well at, at the elementary level.
And I hope the, I, I'm sure the board understands this, you know, we, when we, we got the marching orders early from the multiple surveys, we started creating a process, a system. And we certainly don't want to, you know, in the middle of the process, you know, stop, back up, change direction. We needed to, to complete that process. Now that we're in it, again, I just, you know, let's, let's, let's do this a few weeks, make sure, you know, we understand the, the current conditions. And I, I don't disagree with anything I'm hearing tonight. It's, it's just a question of, you know, how we do it, if that's the best course, and with those impacts. So let us consider that, we'll certainly come back to you.
Especially if we're starting to see staff issues, I don't know if we are at the elementary level, to me, that, that should be a number one risk, even if it's staff needs. So if that, if acting on that helps alleviate some of that, then, and I agree with what you said, we have to get into it first before we know, but I would not shortchange key importance or see the potential staff.
What's the next slide, Cassie? Oh, this is just important for people to know. What would cause schools or the district to get to a return to virtual learning? We've seen a couple of schools in Merrill, and of course, to Stephen's point, really it does come down to staffing. Can we supervise students? Can we deliver effective instruction? I've already mentioned this early tonight, that 30 to 40% seems to be, of staff absences seems to be the untenable situation. There are a number of things we're doing to mitigate that staffing. Again, substitute staff who are supervising students, I mentioned that. That hub supervision, one of the things that we are, I don't know if we are doing it now, if we're still designing it, but if we are short-staffed, we could, again, utilize that hub situation. We might put two or three classes of students into a gymnasium with one or two staff and save a staff person. So that's another possibility that we're looking at. And then, of course, you know, quarantine a classroom. You may have heard we had to do that for the first time starting today. And then, of course, you know, quarantine a school when necessary, and of course, that would allow substitutes who would often be available for that school to potentially support other schools. So there's a number of steps listed here that we might be able to engage in.
Did we hear of a classroom that's quarantined?
We had one classroom quarantined, yes.
As of today?
Starting today, yes.
Is it in elementary? We haven't heard of that.
Yes.
Okay, and, and the whole class had to go into quarantine?
Correct.
Okay, so what, so what was different about that class that they weren't distanced enough?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, frankly. It was a, a teacher reported that he, that could not guarantee that students were socially distanced, and the, the thinking was that there was a student up front, and as students passed them, that they were within six feet. I don't know if I agree with that assessment, so we're not sure exactly, but that's the situation.
I had, had heard that we were looking into, or maybe we already have, hiring long-term subs, just hiring them for certain buildings. Have we done that, or are we, are we looking at doing that? Just, you're just hired for the rest of the year? Is that something we're doing or looking into?
Yeah. Can you give us the status of that tablet?
Sure. From the address, okay.
Sure. I can hear you, yeah.
So we offer the ability for elementary to teach on higher ones, but secondary schools will hire two substitutes, and sort of permanent subs, and I give authorization for now, for winter break, to help with transition, as they're getting into the in-person learning. The concept being that those substitutes would be able to pass those, called locations, to help with supervising the classroom, and for, live in for other unfilled vacancies throughout the year. So definitely that's the structure that we gave them, and they are in the process of graduating from school with fighters, but they are closed.
Well, I think that makes a lot of sense, rather than having to fight and claw with other districts over a limited number of subs. And if we have a day where there isn't a staff member out in that building, I'm sure there's plenty to do, so I think it's well worth the expense. I think it's a good idea, and we would encourage you to keep looking into it and maybe even expanding it.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. Thank you.
I agree.
So can the, can the kind of play, let's make a deal like they do with their support staff, and if there's a greater need in one school on a particular day, kind of swap people out a little bit?
Potentially.
Okay. Just wondering.
Did they today? Okay.
We, we moved somebody from one elementary school to another elementary school at the other day to maybe for tomorrow. And this staff member was super agreeable and said absolutely everything he would do against her first class, but we were careful in the distance of.
Sure. Good to know.
I think that's the end of this, yeah.
I have a question about custodians. Do we have any custodians in quarantine right now?
I believe we do.
I heard about two in one elementary school. How many total do we have in quarantine? And who, who picks up their duties if we have?
Other custodians.
From other, other buildings?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And very good, now.
Sure.
And now our positive summer intelligence, some of us make out to be right, I want to have some others.
Thank you. Are there other questions? So if I, if I'm hearing this, despite there being support for taking some off the elementary teachers, what I'm hearing from administration is, let's wait and see. Or are you going to come, are you going to do something and bring back new information in two weeks?
We will bring back a recommendation in two weeks.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Wait, the recommendation is for going to four days a week?
We'll bring a recommendation, not sure what it's going to be yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that update. Next, we are moving to Agenda Item Eight. This is new business, also from the Education Operations Committee meeting. The first was the 2020-2021 Student Demographic Report, where John Euding shared that information. The second item here, partnering with Bell Timber for Forest Management Plan, that was just in an effort to more actively manage and optimize the resources of our forested properties. The district is partnering with Bell Timber, Inc. to assist in creating, updating, and maintaining a comprehensive forest management plan, and the affected schools do include Maine, South Mountain, Horace Manwata East, Hewitt, Texas, and the school forest. Agenda Item Nine, committee updates, board referrals, there are none. Agenda Item Ten, open forum, first item, legislative liaison report. Clerk Lowe, do you have a legislative liaison update today?
Yes, I do. So we're all aware, there was an election, was it last week? Yeah, and so, in the state legislature, the, the state senate, the Republican majority was expanded. And so, and then, I was also thinking, you know, I really should be reporting on, you know, the, the executive office of our state legislature too, so, because they're important as well. So I, I watched the last DHS briefing that Governor Evers gave, and so, just, I just want to give out some points on there. So Governor Evers, he did release $10 million in CARES funding and grants for nonprofits, which are providing critical services facing significant challenges due to COVID, such as housing, adult education, et cetera. So Dr. Helmers, he is the Regional Vice President of Mayo Sign, I believe that was what he said. So Dr. Helmers, Governor Evers just basically communicated that Dr. Helmers was pleading with everyone to comply with all recommended health measures to reduce transmission, such as wearing a mask, staying home as much as you can, and avoid gatherings outside of your household. Some things that Andrea Palm, the secretary designee, wanted to announce during the briefing was that as of November 3rd, the total confirmed new cases was 5,935, and on the seven-day average, new cases are 4,839, whereas compared to a month ago, we were at 2,400 for the seven-day average new cases, and then two months ago, it was 767. So that increase of 4,839, she did say that was an increase of 531%, and that was in eight weeks. All 72 counties are at a very high level of COVID, and high level means that the county needs to reach a case burden of 350 cases for every 100,000 residents, and many counties have over 1,000 or 2,000 cases per every 100,000 residents. Many hospitals are reporting staffing strain, they are full, and their options are limited. The alternate care facility in Milwaukee, they are accepting new COVID patients. Overall, a total of 2,165 residents have died from COVID. And one thing they did say is, a negative COVID test does not mean that you are free and clear, you must still isolate and keep monitoring your symptoms, and it means that only up until you took that test that you do not have COVID. Other thing she's mentioned is, even though counties, some counties may be behind in contact tracing, contact tracing can still save lives, and it is still recommended by the state health department. Let's see. And then, the question was asked, are there any mitigation efforts that are having any effect? And the statement was, masks work because they are a barrier to respiratory droplets, and reducing capacity limits work as well. And she did mention that other states are not seeing the hot, the strain on hospitals like Wisconsin is seeing. So that is all I have. All right, thank you, Clerk Lowe. Next, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Are there any board members that would like to share professional growth and development for the month? All right, hearing none, we'll go to Agenda Item C here, Superintendent Commentary. Dr. Hiltz, do you have some commentary tonight?
Just two. First of all, thank you to the WASA East staff. Mr. Bushman, if you don't know, is the, is the principal of WASA East, he's with us. Glenn in the back, thank you for setting all this up and, and, and setting up our audio. So thank you all for your work. Secondly, following up on the, on the board professional growth and development, I do have two awards here from WASB. First is Mr. Webster, award level two, congratulations, Lee. These are granted for acquiring a certain number of hours or events in professional development for board, so I'll give this to you, congratulations. And the second is Mr. Boucher. Jim, if you can hear me, award level one for Mr. Boucher. So congratulations to you both, and thank you for engaging in that professional development.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Onto Presiding Officer Commentary. First, I'd like to enter the Board Member Liaison District Activity Report into the official record. I also have two appointments tonight. One is for CISA IX Board Representative, one is for WASA School District School Foundation Board Representative. I did send an email, how I still have not heard some interest on one of these. So hopefully, some interest will manifest in the next moment or so, but in the interim, for the CISA IX Board Representative, I would, will appoint Lee Webster to that. Thank you very much, Lee. All right, WASA School District School Foundation Board Representative, is there any interest in serving as a school foundation representative?
I wonder if board members understand the commitment to that, or is that clear to folks?
We could certainly hear about it in greater detail.
Yeah, sure. So the WASA School Foundation, first of all, they're, they raise money just to support our students and our staff and our community. That's their, their sole mission. They meet monthly. I am an ad hoc member, John Winter is a staff member. It's an active group, it's a very positive group. Meetings last about an hour, and obviously, you know, it's a working board, so there is some work outside of those meetings, but again, it's all focused on supporting staff and students.
What time is the date?
It is about 4:00 PM on a Wednesday, I forget which one. I enjoy those board meetings. Not that I don't enjoy these board meetings, I didn't mean that, but they're, like I said, they're very positive, they're, they're focused on, on supporting. For instance, a lot of our teacher recognition awards, the, I'm forgetting the name of it. Caught in the App, thank you, is, is one of the, I would have brought some, some documentation, but I, I think that kind of explains the, the responsibility.
Where are those meetings usually held? Are they at? Are they at Longfellow?
They have been at Longfellow, they've also been at the hospital currently, they are virtual.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. Any interest, board members? In serving as the representative? I'm seeing some people not wanting to make eye contact. Okay, I'm solidly seeing...
How flexible are they on their time? Yeah, because I, you know, I teach exactly at that time.
Yeah, they're not, I'm sorry. They've had an established time, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I will appoint myself.
Okay.
Okay, so unless there's objections, there's anybody having a second thought? No? No? Okay, all right, there we go. All right, the last thing in Presiding Officer Commentary is something that I just want to bring to the board's attention for consideration for things going forward, and it was the mention that I made about board members serving on committees. I know this is something that happened in the past, you know, Jane has referenced that with her long time on the board, and board members serving on committees. I certainly think there might be opportunities where we should be considering that. Certainly with Project Relaunch, there was great opportunity with the referendum, but just going forward, if we see those opportunities, I think as a board, we should discuss that. Is this something where we should have a board member also participating? Okay, with that, I'm moving to Agenda Item 11. This is a request for closed session pursuant to state statute, and I believe I have to read all of these just as a matter of precision. So we have, I'm going to be seeking, I am seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss, number one, preliminary consideration of a former employee's request for a hearing under state statute 19.851F. Number two, confer with legal counsel regarding possible litigation under state statute 19.851G. Number three, evaluation of superintendent of schools under state statute 19.851C. And number four, discuss an employee performance matter under state statute 19.851C and/or F. This will be a roll call vote.
So move second.
Jim Boucher?
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Oh, okay, here we go.
Is that me?
Yes.
Can I go?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Let's go.
Yes.
You want to go?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so with that, we will move to closed session to a new location, and we will only reconvene and open if necessary to take further action.